School Board, we have moments, our time before the meeting begins for public comment. I'll read a quick statement and then I'll call up the individuals who have signed up to speak this evening. Comments from visitors must be informational in nature and may not exceed five minutes per issue. The board cannot engage in discussion or debate in those five minutes, but will take information and find answers if that is appropriate. As part of the protocol, it is unacceptable for any speaker to slander or engage in character assassination, or discuss student or personnel complaints, including but not limited to teachers, coaches, bus drivers, principals, board members, and administrators at a public board meeting. As such, speakers will not be allowed to identify district employees either by name or position during public comment period. Thank you. Our first speaker is Kelsey Jezerski.
Okay, well, usually I'm not first, but I guess I should probably just get used to that. Hi, I'm Kelsey Jezerski, y'all know me by now, I think. Um, I guess if I'm, should I, am I supposed to say my address?
You know, I think that was, you know, that was a policy a while ago, but we don't do that anymore.
That's good. Um, so, good evening, everyone. I hope that everyone had a relaxing four-day weekend and overindulged in turkey and pumpkin pie, and also reflected on how this holiday is a prime example of how we pretty up historical atrocities and brutalities of the United States. With that said, I want to acknowledge that we are gathering on the traditional and seized lands of the Wapkut Band of the Ochedi Shakowin Nation. I unfortunately could not make it to the last board meeting, but did watch it on YouTube. I made sure to be here tonight to actually address one of the agenda items that was introduced during that meeting. About an hour into the meeting, right after the finance update, which was very thorough and informative, and I have to admit, I was still very lost, because numbers, I'm not very good at them. So, right after that finance update, there was the introduction of a newly drafted policy. And it left me with a lot of concerns. It, from my own personal perspective and opinion, this policy felt oppressive. It felt... It, its purpose, it felt to me, was to censor marginalized populations who have been historically silenced, all because of people's fragility. When I went to reference the policy from the agenda, I noticed that the policy was in the trash. In all honesty, I actually hope it stays there. My opinion is that this policy is reactionary and ironically written from a place of personal political beliefs and bias. Those that sit in places of power need to be mindful of their own inherent positions of power and authority. It concerns me that there's no clear definition of what's considered political, because as we know, these days, everything is considered political. And also, there's no clear definition of what was considered a political bias. This vague verbiage leaves educators and administrators to the mercy of the interpretation of what falls under these terms of those who hold positions of power and authority. So, I hope that if this policy is to be pushed through and passed, that there are clear defined definitions of what those terms mean and what specifically falls under those terms, so that there is no interpretation or personal beliefs influencing or impacting decision-making when it comes to, hopefully not, any sort of disciplinary action. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sarah Frye.
Good evening, everybody. Board members, administration, staff, and community members. I'm also speaking about the new staff professional conduct policy that was read or introduced at the last meeting. Specifically, item D states, "Teachers, other classroom staff, and district employees are to refrain from interjecting personal political beliefs or biases that are unrelated to instructional goals into the development of curriculum or lesson plans." This item leaves a wide gray area open to very different interpretations depending on the reader's political leaning and bias. Who defines what is political? Some individuals would say that acknowledgement of racism in the world today is political. Others would say that our society is moving toward a goal of treating all with respect and dignity and not political. Some might say that religion is not political and therefore open to full discussion, but others might argue that religion is heavily woven into politics and creates bias and therefore should not be discussed. Employees are not cyborgs. It's not possible for bias to be left at the doorway of district buildings. Teachers, staff, and students carry it with them wherever they go. If the policy's intent is to be respectful, kind, and tolerant with one another, this policy is redundant. We already have policies in place for that. Students need opportunities to discuss the facets of life that create bias with teachers and trusted adults in many spaces to learn how to interact with a very diverse world that they will face once they leave Farmington schools. Bullying occurs from escalated misunderstandings of personal differences. If students and staff are no longer allowed to discuss their personal biases, political views, and beliefs in respectful ways, then bullying will not decrease, it will increase. Making a gay order policy forcing students and staff from even talking about their own biases will only lead to greater numbers of escalated conflicts, which will bring questions, which will bring questions that this policy is not written to address. It is my opinion that this policy should not be confirmed into use in District 192. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any other speakers at this time. The rest of the meeting begins at 5:30, so we'll just take a couple of minutes and get reset. Thank you. All right, I'll call to order this meeting of the Farmington School Board. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. All right. Thank you. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any items or questions about the agenda? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have an agenda. First item is good news and superintendent update. Superintendent Berg, would you...
Thank you, Chair Christensen, members of the board and members of the community. We'll keep it pretty short tonight, because we are finishing up our school updates tonight. So, we have four kind of schools. North Trail, the really cool thing about North Trail is unfortunately Dr. Geis, who I think most people have heard by now is retiring on December 14th, was unable to make it tonight. So, we get to introduce, well, the North Trail community knows Ms. Galarno, but the rest of the Farmington community is going to get to see Ms. Galarno in action tonight, as she's going to give us the report on North Trail. So, there's no pressure on her. We'll see how she does, and then we might have it, no, I'm just kidding. She's going to be awesome. Joining her is going to be Aiken Road, FHS, and then Special Services. And this is actually Dana Strop's first time to be in front of the board as well. So, we have two newbies, treat them well, they're going to do a fantastic job. And Dana's going to talk Special Services, but more specifically, early childhood. We, we, we had a meeting after Patriotic Day, but because we didn't do a superintendent good news and updates, I didn't get an opportunity to just say what an awesome event that was. It was so great to get back in person. It was a huge success for being away for two years. Some of the enhancements that were made, the steaks, the chicken nuggets for the kids and things like that were very well received. Student speaker was fantastic. If you have not had the opportunity to go online and listen to Jordan's Voice of Democracy essay, it's worth it, just grab a tissue when you do that. And then a huge thank you to the Patriotic Day Committee. Kyle and Sue both served on that and just did a fantastic job. Our fall seasons are officially done. Want to give an update on our state tournament participants. Our girls cross-country team qualified state and finished seventh. This is their sixth top eight finish since 2015, so had a really successful run. And the super interesting and cool thing is all seven of the VRC runners are going to return for 2023. So, more big things on the horizon for them. We had two girls swim and dive, ers, a swimmer and a diver, qualify for the state meet up at the U of N, U of M. Diver Jordan Schmucker finished in second place. She missed first place by point six of a point, so heck of a run by her. And she's had a heck of a career at Farmington, holds a lot of pool records for diving. So, went out on top. I mean, we'll just give her, we'll round up, right? We want to round up for people, we'll give it to her. And then, we have another state championship, state championship team in our district. The Farmington, Lakeville, Burnsville Blazing Cats Adaptive Soccer Team won their second state championship in a row and third overall, and they beat their dreaded rivals Dakota United, seven to four in that championship game. So, hats off to them. They've been, that team, not only in adaptive soccer, but also adaptive softball, has been on quite a run. So, Farmington's well represented on that. And then, we head into the winter season, and that really hits full sewing this week. So, if you had an opportunity, hop onto the high school calendar and check out all the different events that are going on. I'm sure Kennedy and Michael will talk about this as the end of the first trimester this Thursday. We were talking a little bit about this today. I know for some people, it's kind of dragged. I can't believe we're in December and we're a third of the way done with the school year. It just seems to go by. And then, just a public service announcement. I know people have probably been watching the weather getting exciting. We are going to have school tomorrow, even if it snows. So, you can post that wherever you want, but school is on and will be on, so.
I thought that I was going to post some rumors that I heard from...
You are going to pre- prevent the rumors from going out. So, thank you very much, that's all I have for tonight.
All right. Our next item is school, student school board member update. I'll start with Michael.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Coming up this week for ISD 192 is finals week at the high school. This Wednesday and Thursday, the high school is having its try-one finals with an adjusted schedule on both of those days and Friday off. With the end of one trimester comes the beginning of the next. And to that end, counselors are on standby tomorrow, Thursday, Tuesday, 29th, to work out any last-minute schedule changes. Looking back, since we haven't had a student school board update since October 28th, there are a few things that we can recollect on. The school play Allswell and Roswell, a really great performance from our theater department. I was there, I almost, I almost went to it twice, I wasn't able to, but it was a great performance overall. To echo Superintendent Berg, Patriotic Day was a really big success. All of the speakers, the choir, the band, really did an amazing job. And it's, since it's the first one we've had since COVID, really great show. Loved the steak, was a big fan of that. And city and district leadership both expressed wanting to expand Patriotic Day in the future, and personally, I couldn't agree more. Finally, to reflect, elections occurred across the state, including elections for three school board positions here in ISD 192. So, I just want to say congratulations to all of you who won, and thank you to everyone who ran. Finally, we have some very cold weather in the forecast this week, like to echo Superintendent Berg, specifically tomorrow, just to remember to students who drive or new student drivers, to keep it slow and safe and budget for time to get to school slower than normal.
So, kind of echoing what everyone else is saying, we have finals week, kind of exciting, kind of nerve-wracking. It's been pretty crazy at the high school, because we had a little bit of an extended weekend, and then next week, we're starting our new trimester too, with all the sports coming back up. But you can see all the students are kind of, we're happy for the winter break that's coming up and all of that. So, it's really nice, be the high school, the atmosphere right now. Next week, FHS is holding their academic ceremony. So, for all of the 2021 through 2022 student academic winners of a GPA of 3.667 or higher, they're invited to come to this ceremony. And we actually have a lot of really smart kids at our school. So, 217 current sophomores, 269 current juniors, 208 current seniors, for a grand total of 694 students. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's about a third, maybe a fourth of our student body. So, it's pretty amazing to see how many students are there. So, congrats to everyone who won that award. Last week, we had a fall scavenger hunt brought to you by the student council. It was called Lurkey Turkey, Lurkey with an E. There were five turkeys hidden around each day before we went on our little break. There was a total of 10 winners, they each got a little candy prize when they found them. So, they're just hidden around the school to kind of keep you looking if you're flexed out or things like that. And for more student news and events, you can follow Farmtown Studs on Instagram. Farmington also offers some national trips over spring break. So, right now is the signup time for our 2024 Spring Break National Trips, where they're going all around Europe. So, any freshmen, sophomores, or juniors, current freshmen, sophomores, or juniors, that's for you. So, if you'd like to visit Italy, Greece, or the Greek islands, then you can talk to Ms. Laubi at the high school. And if you'd like to visit England, France, Germany, Switzerland, or the Czech Republic, you can talk to Mr. Williams also at the high school. And then finally, next week, 7th graders from Dodge and 8th graders from Bachman are going on a courage retreat led by Youth Frontiers with some volunteers of our high school students. So, this retreat has some large group activities, like they've done musical chairs in the past, kind of getting everyone together. And then they'll have some small group discussions where they're going to talk about their larger themes of motivation and taking positive risks and making healthy differences for their own lives and their peers at their schools. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thanks for the updates. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Let me get back over to... The consent agenda is made up of routine business items that can be acted on with a single motion. If any board member wishes to discuss an item, they may request that it be pulled from the consent agenda, and it will be acted upon separately. Does anyone have an item they'd wish to discuss? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Carrero, second by Dettinger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that moves us into reports and communications. And I've got to toggle back and forth too much tonight.
All right, well, good evening, members of the board. I am Tracy Mangeson. I am the principal at Aiken Road. Correction on Superintendent Berg, this is my first time officially in front of the board, and believe it or not, I've been here for two and a half years. So, that tells you what COVID has done.
You'll be all right.
So, I am here to share, I'm going to pull this up with you, some things about Aiken Road, things that we have happening in our building. And we're going to start with our strategic plan that we came up with. As you know, the board and many of the community members and faculty from the school worked on our district-wide strategic plan. We chose then to pull a group together of our leadership team at Aiken Road in June with Superintendent Berg's help, and we came up with our strategic plan, and I will kind of read that for you. "The mission of Aiken Road Elementary School, a diverse and self-aware community of the curious individuals committed to continuous growth, is to ensure personal agency and impactful learning through the development of intellectual and interpersonal skills to positively impact a world of ever-evolving communities through safe and supportive environments, validating and exploring diverse and individual perspectives, community connection and collaboration, and learner-centered environments and experiences." So, those, that strategic plan right there is going to be the what and the how and the why we do anything that we do at Aiken Road. So, those are one of our, that's our guiding principle right there. One of our focuses this year is to spend time with literacy. And so, we are focusing on that in collaboration with our teaching and learning department to create engaging literacy blocks to meet the needs of all learners. We also have our social and emotional supports in there. We are not a true PBIS school, but we use a lot of that philosophy. We do that through our guidance counselor, our school counselor, Mrs. Jody Pfeifer. She does monthly classroom lessons, she does student groups, we do support. She's also a big leader in our, we have an Aiken Road house program. And so, every student and adult that is at Aiken Road belongs to a specific house color. They have each, I belong to the house of Atimba. Our animal is the elephant, and our, and so we all have a skill, and we have a group that we belong to. And we tell kids, it's another way to have a group that you belong to at Aiken Road. So, you don't just have your kindergarten class or the kindergarten class, but then you also have another group with your house colors. We're doing a lot of house color activities, and we are creating some of the things that we've missed over the last two years. The houses give us those opportunities to intermix grade levels and have chances to come together and work together with our house groups in those ways. We can have lunch with our house members. We can do activities based with your house members within class, within grade level, or within building. So, Jody's a big part of that. We have our behavior specialist, who also does student support and check-ins. We have our Family 360 Support Worker, Ms. McCarthy. And every Monday, they get to see my bright shiny face on our morning announcements, and I talk to them about some of our character traits that we have that we work on throughout our school-wide expectations and traits. And then, finally, we have our family and engagement piece. This is another part of what we do here. We have obviously our weekly newsletters and announcements that go out to parents. We do monthly All-Star programs with our Tiger Star Awards, which is also part of our social-emotional, but PBIS-type programming. Our All-Star program, we have had our Back To In Person just in this year, and we've already had two complete full houses and lots of happy families back in place. Our PTP hosts our Tiger Trot, we're going to have a movie night. We also have a dance coming up in January, I believe it is. We also started something new this year called Positive Office Referrals. Teachers can nominate students who then get a half a slip of paper telling what they've done well in their classroom or in the building, and then it comes to me, I go pull that student, and then we make a really cool phone call home to explain what they got their award for, and I push for an extra dessert for them, but that doesn't always happen. But I tell them, I try, so. And then we also have our Facebook posts. So, any questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy.
Justice? Good evening, my name is Kelly Galarno, and I will be filling in for Dr. Geis as the interim principal at North Trail Elementary School. Like Aiken, we also went through this summer in June, and we redefined our mission at North Trail and what we are about. The mission of North Trail Elementary School, a learning community rooted in the beauty and growth of dreams, is to cultivate each learner by illuminating and honoring strengths, passions, and life experiences to make a positive impact through learner-centered experiences, collaborative culture with learning communities, reflection that supports self-awareness, honoring diverse perspectives, and nurturing individuality. Again, like Tracy said, this would be our why and our how of what we're going to be doing moving forward at North Trail. For our learning design, the staff at North Trail are continually learning and growing in our instructional practices and our commitment to student learning and engagement. In the last few years, we have started by incorporating what is called win time, what I need time, into our instructional day, and we are committed to continue our understanding. We're sort of in the beginning process. So, we're committed to continuing that understanding of how we can utilize our time and our talents to best meet the needs and ignite the strengths and passions of all of our learners. This fall, we invited Jen Jones. She is a literacy, kind of Instagram literacy person, and our staff was super excited to invite her into our school at our Back to School Workshop Week and learn new practices in literacy in line with the Big Five and our work with the Teaching and Learning Department. We're going to continue to strengthen our literacy instruction to meet the needs of all of our learners and how we can best use ourselves and our resources in our classroom. For social and emotional supports, we are blessed with a really amazing school counselor, Ms. Lyric, who does monthly classroom lessons, has groups with students throughout the building, and also supports students each day at school. We are a PBIS school. We show our roar at North Trail by showing respect, organization, attitude, and responsibility, and that common language and the common ideas throughout the building really help guide students in what we expect throughout our building, how they can act. It goes into terms of what we feel and how we respond to our feelings in different areas of our whole building, not just in our classroom. Lots of our classrooms are responsive classrooms, and you can go to many classrooms at North Trail in the morning and see kids circled up in a morning meeting, learning all about each other, playing games and interacting, not just in academics, but in ways that help them connect with each other and with themselves. And then finally, we have Tanya Mastin. She is our 360 Communities Worker. She is helping support all of our families in many ways at North Trail. And finally, we have our family engagement. We have a very active PTP at North Trail. My favorite day of the year is our Booster-Thon Fun Run. We had that this fall already, and it just shows really the support that we have in our community. It's a great time to connect with parents and students, have a really good day. There's a DJ, who doesn't love a DJ? We have Culvers Nights, where our staff goes and serves our families and connects with each other. I know my kids love to go there and get ice cream and see their teachers. And we have a pretty active Facebook page as well that parents can tap into. Literacy Family Nights are another tradition at North Trail that helped us, helped us connect with our families. This fall, we will be having, this week actually, our Read Into Retirement Celebration of Dr. Geis's many years of service and his commitment to literacy in our building. And then in the spring, we usually have a spring tailgate, summer kickoff, where we have food and books and all the resources from the community inspiring literacy throughout the summer. We also have Seesaw, which is great for parent communication and engagement. You can send photos and messages to parents, and they can kind of get a real-time, active, what's happening in my students' classroom today. Staff email updates, and of course, we love to invite parent volunteers into our building as much as possible. Thank you.
Kelly, I just have one comment.
Oh, question.
First, congratulations.
Thank you.
I got to spend time with her last, I don't know, last week during your auction. It was really impressive, so. But again, congratulations to your new position. But I do, as a board member, want to say, since Dr. Geis usually gets out of these meetings, I guess I'm formally requesting to have him come to our next board meeting in December, so please pass that along to him.
Will do, will do.
You've worked with Dr. Geis, you're going to have to formally request that yourself, I believe.
I'm sure I'll get a phone call in the morning on this, but, no, but congratulations on that.
Thank you so much. Any other questions?
Well, good evening, Chair Christensen, members of the board. Thank you for having me. Before I go, my name is Dan Pig, I'm the principal at Farmington High School. As the only veteran here, in what world am I considered a veteran? I don't know. But I've been here before. Right, exactly, one of those things. I want to put a quick plug in, as I, as I listen to Kennedy and Michael give their update. We are currently accepting applications for next year's student school board members. So, I posted that on School G a few times, so if there's any parents watching or students watching and they want to remind their students to apply, 10th and 11th graders can apply to be the next student school board member. And I have not seen Mr. Gibbs' application in yet, but I hope to see that very soon. Not going to put any pressure on him. I know you will, we've already talked about it. So, I will, well, we also went through a new strategic planning process at Farmington High School. I've been lucky enough in this district to be a part of multiple, multiple of these refreshes and reboots of the strategic plan. And I got to say, it's just, it's a really invigorating process, it's a really motivating process. And coming out of the past few years and how difficult it has been to really realize some of these things, going through this refresh right now was a really good timing for us, so we can refocus on some things at Farmington High School. You know, think about those things that we really care about, what really roots us in the work that we do, and then kind of move forward with that. So, I'm not going to read it for you, it's up there, if you'd like to take a look at that. But that's our new Farmington High School strategic plan. Just made some, I mean, somewhat minor adjustments to it, changed some language, but the group that we brought together is really happy with the product that we were able to put out there, and we've been sharing this as much as possible. out there and we've been sharing this as much as possible with, with community and with our staff as well. Really what it comes down to and what some of the work that we do at the high school, we're lucky enough where our students are much more independent and we want them to start to realize, like the students to learn about themselves, you know, what do they want to do? What are their skills? How do they learn? Really kind of dive in deep so that we can provide opportunities for kids, but we really want the kids to learn these things for themselves and make these decisions at a much earlier age than when I was going to school. You didn't really think about after high school until after high school or maybe senior year. And it starts so much earlier now. So even when kids are coming in as ninth graders, we want them to start having some of these experiences and learn, you know, how to be an adult at, at an early age. So one of our goals from our operational plan, we took our strategic plan and then we built an operational plan that's a little bit more concrete and some of the things that we want to focus in at Farmington High School. One of our goals was to continue to develop and implement elements of personalized learning, including design of learning, flexible learning opportunities, and competency-based reporting. Something that we do each and every year, but again, this was an opportunity coming out of COVID mostly to kind of refocus ourselves on some of this work. So I dropped in there a few, just some of these opportunities that we want to provide for students that they can kind of practice these things. We want kids practicing these skills. If we want them to have skills when they graduate Farmington High School, we have to give them opportunities to practice them while they're in our building. So our building's a safe place where, guess what? Kids mess things up sometimes. They make bad decisions and that's okay. We want them to do those things in our buildings so that we can pick them up, dust them off, and, and help them learn from their mistakes and things like that. And almost everything that we do at Farmington High School is really rooted in some of that, that type of work. So we have some flexible learning opportunities. We have some competency-based grading floating around at our school. We have a new schedule this year and we've built in some academic support time throughout the day where students, and we're using a program called Flexy Sched, Flex Schedular or something like that. I don't know the actual name of it, but it's on all the student iPads and teachers can either identify students that they need to see and then the kids have to come to them during that time, a couple of chunks throughout the week. Or kids can then say, all right, well, nobody identified me as needing, they need to see me, so then I'm going to go get some help from my math teacher. I'm going to go do this. Or I got all my stuff in and I'm going to use this time to kind of just relax a little bit and, and refocus or do what they need to. So that's academic support time. It's some dedicated time for students to practice that agency. And then we also have some off-campus opportunities that I'm sure you've heard about before, but our Career Tech classes up at DCTC, Mint Cabs, Cosmetology School, and then many of our students select to do PSEO as well. The little parentheses that you see in there, those are taken from our Profiles of a Lifelong Learner, part of our strategic plan, district strategic plan, and that's really our connection at Farmington High School. Some of those skills that I talk about that we want students to be able to have when they graduate, we want them to have these things and learn about these things. So these are opportunities for them to practice some of those things while they're at Farmington High School. Along with that new schedule change, we have Tiger Connections in TC, some of our kids call it, and CCR, which is Career and College Readiness. So that's a couple of times a week during that same time as academic support. I'm not going to go through the schedule because it's confusing, but it's during that same time, right in the middle of the day. We also have a new and improved student intervention team. We got new members on there where we meet once a week and we're getting going, some more support groups for students, some anxiety support groups and grief and loss support groups, just as an access point for, for kids that have some emotional needs that we have, we have the staff in our buildings to be able to support students, but we need to find and create structures so that students can get access to those staff members and, and build relationships. And then also, like I mentioned, our connection is really through our Profiles of a Lifelong Learner. We're doing a big audit, I guess you could say, with all of our teachers, all of our classes. We're going to identify if, if, if Michael is in Algebra II, what skill, other than the Algebra II curriculum that he's working on, what skills does he have an opportunity to practice while he's there? Maybe it's time management, maybe it's collaboration, maybe it's authentic application. So our teachers are going to identify some of those things that are really evident in their courses, going to get a whole list of like, what do we have at Farmington High School? What gaps do we need to fill in? Do we need to create more opportunities for students to practice finding balance in their life? Whatever it ends up being, we're going to see, we're going to kind of do an audit and figure out where those gaps are and what are we really good at at Farmington High School and how are we providing feedback back to Michael in his Algebra II class of, you know what? Your Algebra II grades an A, but you weren't managing your time very well. So how can you learn how to do that a little bit better and, and so that you can be more successful? Not a true story. You're probably not even in Algebra II, but probably already through that. But that was just an example that, that I'll give. And then ultimately, I still believe, and I've said this before, I think that the biggest indicator of student success is still relationships. We have to, everything we have, we do has to be rooted in building relationships and that's what we're about at Farmington High School. And you're not going to like all your teachers, for sure. Kids aren't going to like all their teachers, but we want everybody to have at least a couple of adults, positive adults in their life that, that can help guide them and have a relationship that gets people coming to school and staying in school and all of those types of things. So everything that we do is about relationships. Some of my community engagement that we're working on at Farmington High School, obviously I have my weekly emails that I send out on Sundays. And then we are, we revamped our conferences. We've just seen a decline in, in, in families that, that connect during conferences at the high school. I think some of it is you, you go through six, seven years of, of, of education and parenting and you're like, okay, my kid's got this now and they just kind of step back. Maybe it's some of that and whatever it ends up being, but we're trying to, instead of just accepting the fact that, that people won't come in, we're going to try to revamp and, and try to meet them where they're at. So we are changing it from conferences to Connection Week where we spend an entire week where we're dedicated on making connections with families. So teachers have some, have some times where parents can come in and, and meet and do the traditional conferences, but we also want to use that time to reach out and send emails and make phone calls. And we can do virtual conferences or in-person conferences, trying to be as flexible as possible to meet the variety of different schedules that parents have and, and our teachers have. So we went through our first Connection Week in, we do it at week six of each trimester. Went through our first one during trimester one. We have our, our second one at week six, which is lands in the middle of January, I think. So look for communication around what our Connection Weeks are and when they are if you are an FHS family. And then the last thing that I, that I wanted to highlight here was a new program that's called Friendly Presence at FHS. We're starting this year. Basically, you know, we don't really have PTPs. Many high schools don't have a lot of opportunities for parents to come in and volunteer. And I'm probably going long here, but I'm going to keep going because I'm a veteran, I guess.
You came back in five minutes.
Seasoned, yes.
Keep going.
Yeah, all right, perfect. This came to evidence me, last year I reached out to some parents trying to plan a senior barbecue and a couple of other senior events and I got this overwhelming response. People that just wanted to help and wanted to come in and they said, we can help whenever. And there's, there's definitely a population of people out there that are willing to come in and help and we need the help. You know, we have a hard time finding staff sometimes in some open positions, so if we can flood our buildings with positive adults that can be connect, positive connections for kids, then let's do it. And by flood, I mean I got 15 people, but that's a start, right? And there's a couple of ways that they can get involved. They can, they can volunteer in our lunchroom and we've seen some people doing that already. We have people that are coming in and opening the doors and just being a smiling face as the kids walk in, saying hi, keeping, holding the door. It's been pretty successful so far. You can be a friendly presence in our hallways, just being around. We get these nice little lanyards with a smiley face on them, so even if they're not smiling, their lanyard is all the time. And then also an opportunity to help plan. If you don't have the opportunity to work during the day or don't have the opportunity to come in during the day, help plan some staff or student appreciation events, probably more so in the spring when we do some of those things for seniors as well. So I'm really happy with it so far. I've had a couple of, I go through orientations with the people that are interested, do background checks, all the things, but I'm really excited about the new program and, and I've got a pretty good response from, from parents and community members as well. I think that's all I got. That's all I got.
So Dan, quick question. Is that open to the public then? Are you, do you have to be, show them to the public?
Mm-hmm.
She might be seeing me then, I guess, after December a little bit more.
Well, I mean, there's a, there's a vetting process. But I might be, you're right.
I think it's a great idea to do something like that.
Yeah. And, and so right now we have, we, we, most of those 15 have been retirees that, that are in the community that get connected through somebody like a parent or something like that. And they're just looking to come in and, and it's been great. They just, they come in for a half an hour, open the door, smile, and, and the kids are starting to get, get used to people that come in a lot, so they know them by name. And I mean, that's relationships, that's positive, you know, positive adults in our, in our buildings. Just, it's been awesome so far.
Well, Dan, I have to say thank you for your Sunday emails because I know I'm not the only one, but as a parent of a high schooler, I look forward to your Sunday emails and I especially look forward to the one before school starts because I know when I see that first email, I'm like, yes, thank you, school started. But thank you for your thoroughness in those emails and, and like I said, thank you for doing those on Sunday because it's a nice way, I don't know how we, well, we set it up for our week and we really, really appreciate that and the time that you take out of your weekend to do that because it, it does mean a lot for our family.
It takes some time, but it's important. I mean, communication's super important and, you know, we, I mean, we talk all the time about, or you guys talk all the time about open and honest communication and transparency and we want to try to model that as well at the, at the high school.
You do a great job.
I appreciate it. Other questions?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Well, the good news is, is I'm a very fast talker. As you know, I'm Dana Stopp, I'm the Director of Special Services. And while I oversee programming birth through 21 in our district, tonight I'm going to focus on the TLLC and Early Childhood Special Education. At the TLLC, we share that space. Early Childhood Special Ed shares it with Chartwells, We Tigers, Community Ed. We have programs at four of the five elementaries where we have co-talk classrooms in the buildings. Whoops, let me, let me turn James back. Where we, we have co-talk classrooms, so our Early Childhood Special Ed Team is in four of the elementaries as well. Megan Orlitt Sullivan is our Early Childhood Special Education Coordinator. So when a child is from birth to five, how do they get referred, right? Like that's a question that sometimes we wonder. And so a parent can look on the website and call the school. They can, a doctor, a daycare provider, a grandparent can go onto the Help Me Grow referral site and make a referral. It's a statewide system that once they put their address in, it goes right to the school district. So we receive that Help Me Grow referral and then we determine whether we're going to evaluate. So a child from birth to three is served by our Birth to Three Team who, they go into the homes. COVID was a little complicated, made things a little tricky. We had families that didn't want us in their homes and we're, we're getting back to having access to those kiddos. But the Birth to Three Providers work with the family to help support the needs of their learner. So we develop the, we, we do the evaluation, determine what the needs are. And then that Birth to Three Provider or Team goes in and works with the family on their desired outcomes of the, the needs that have been identified. So the Birth to Three Team primarily does their work with the parent because they're with the parent for an hour a week or sometimes even less than that. So they're trying to build and coach that parent so that they can put those supports in place in the time that they're not there. So it's a little bit less student-specific, it's more working and, and helping the family. And in those visits, sometimes parents will bring something up that is completely different than what we are planning to do. So then we work with the families and talk through what resources are available or other things. And so we really work with the families in that Birth to Three Program. Three to five, so once a child transitions from birth to three to three to five, they have to re-qualify for special education services, then we have classrooms available. We, they, they, depending on their age, when they, when they turn three, we have toddler classes for kids that turn three after September 1st. Those meet two times a week. And then we have, in our, our three to five programming, we have anything from a center-based classroom to a co-talk classroom where they're in, the, the students in the center-based classroom, it's just a small group of students with special education peers. We have co-talk classrooms where there's, there are general ed peers and there's a group of special ed students with a special ed teacher and they work together. We have some kiddos that get a hybrid of both, right? Like they, they can go in the big group and the small group and they, they work really hard in those small group days on, on building those skills and then they transfer them into their, their co-talk classrooms. Currently, we have 147 students receiving services, birth to five. We have 14 children in referral in birth to three and 40 children in referral from three to five. We're starting to see the numbers come back after COVID. We had a long time where we didn't have a lot of referrals. We're expecting to see that number continue to grow. In three to five, when a student has speech, OT, PT, any of those related service providers, a lot of times they're pushed into that classroom so that they're, they're getting those skills within their natural environment while they're learning, while they're in dramatic play. For social, emotional, and early childhood special ed, as a matter of fact, it's not just early childhood special ed. We're working with We Tigers, Bree and Teresa and Megan and I are working to implement programming for our entire early learning program in conscious discipline. So conscious discipline is a, in early childhood, we, our whole day is social, emotional. We're, we're learning the routines of school. We're learning how to be a good friend, how to sit in class, all the things that happen when you start school, learning those routines, practicing friendships skills, practicing just being a learner in a setting away from home. Conscious discipline is a framework that we're using. The team has been trained, they, they started their training last year, I believe, maybe the year before. It's a trauma-informed research-based model that it, it's not a curriculum, but it's really truly made to address the fact that we know that children want to be safe, they want to be connected. And unless they're safe and connected, to, to, to really draw from that executive function of their brain and learn is not possible. So conscious discipline really talks through that, talks about the, the, the adult framework, right? Like what we're doing and how we're responding to things. Again, most of our team has been trained initially. We have a three to five-year plan that we're working on right now with the team to really dig deeper into that social, emotional framework and also introducing it to our Birth to Three Teams so that they can introduce it to their families at, in the homes. In terms of family engagement, like I said, birth to three, right? Like they're in the homes, there's, there's a lot of engagement. That's, they're working with families all the time. We have, we don't have Seesaw in early learning, but Blooms is a, an app that they use to push out information, push out messages. There's a newsletter that goes home. Megan is working on a parent resource site that we're going to be able to push out things just to connect families to what's going on and also to help support them in, in the needs of their child. We're hoping to implement family nights, guest speakers, other resource nights or resource fairs in early learning. We know that we're often that first stop for families and this is their first introduction to our school district, so we want to do what we can to really build those connections and, and make it a positive and successful experience. We also know that these are, we're telling sometimes as, as early childhood special education, we're telling families that there might be something wrong with their child and, and that's a hard conversation. So we have to balance working with families, meeting where they're at, and helping them give a good experience. Any questions?
Just an observation that we started, I mean, we could have had a, could have like started at the youngest to all the way up to the high school and had a very stitched-together conversation about the ways, the different ways the district serves students and families all the way through. I guess we may be missing Bachman or Dodge. We've, we saw them the last couple of weeks, but no, but thank you for the information. I don't know that I have a main question if, I don't know if it's maybe for all four of you. I mean, this is the first year back after, you know, first really normal year and I just, I, you talked about the, all the different programs that are kind of being put in place to help better engage students and better build, build better relationships. I think that was kind of the common theme between all four of you tonight was about relationships and creating that connection with students and families, I guess. I mean, how is it, I'm just, I like to ask it when I, when I speak to teachers and others, I mean, how has it been this year? Is it, is it the energy that I feel every time I go out into one of our buildings? Is it, I mean, your words, I guess.
You know, this is my first year here. I feel, I feel like. I do feel that there's a different sense, right? As we came into this school year, like last year we came into the school year thinking, all right, here we go, and it wasn't, right? I feel like right now there's a huge relief and we're able to do things that we haven't been able to do for a long time and that's, that's invigorating.
No, yeah, I echo that. I think that one of those first years of COVID, it was, it was really hard on families. And, you know, we're redesigning everything. Last year was, was really hard on staff. Um, it was a really hard year for that. I wouldn't say that things feel normal this year, but the energy just feels different and, um, it's, it's much, it's much, there's, there's high needs for sure, um, in, in some of our students more than we've, we've seen in a long time. But I think that we, we have a, a better capacity to be able to provide for some of that stuff. And again, like going back and, and talking about our rebooting our strategic plans, I think that was a good exercise. Well, it wasn't just an exercise. It was, it was more than that. But it was really good for us to be able to kind of refocus and re-center ourselves. So, yeah, I, I mean, it's kind of back, right?
And it's, and that energy is real.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, 100%. Yeah, yeah, it's not, yeah, for sure. I mean, there's, yeah, it's, it's loud again. So, that's for sure.
The kids are enjoying it. Like, we, we had our African drum residency on the 18th.
Speaking of loud.
We, it was loud. It was amazing, though.
It is.
And we had kids, because as you've seen, our kids that have been going home sick have been really high. And we had kids that had to go home that day and were in tears because they had to miss it. Because that is what those fifth graders have looked forward to that. And it was finally there. And then they had to miss it because they were sick. So, yes, the energy is there. The kids are feeling the energy. And to have the parents and our full student body all in one space to watch this program was incredible. It was exciting.
Awesome.
Yeah.
You know, the other part, Dan, you mentioned relationships. And for new school board members coming in, I think that's going to be the key to your success is getting to know individuals like this. Teachers included, our administration and stuff, spending time to get to know them, not as at their position, but who they are as people. Dan, every now and then, you know, brings challenges to us. But really, I mean, this to me is one of the favorite parts of being a school board member is meetings like this where you actually get to hear what's going on in, in the buildings. And new learnings for me tonight from all of you. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thanks for having us.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is ISD 917 update. Hannah?
Yeah, so, um, busy month at ISD 917. Um, let me just get my notes pulled up here. So, they hosted a retreat for all of the, um, member districts. Their superintendents and board members attended. And during that meeting, they talked about, um, they shared a few things. They talked about, sorry, let me just get to the beginning. I realized I was on the end. So, they talked about the challenges around staffing shortages and way that, ways that similar to, um, all of the member districts are struggling with, similar challenges, how they can work together and try and find innovative ways to meet the needs of the students that are being served there. They, um, also talked during that, that session about centering core values and transforming the culture and collaboration throughout the district and all of their buildings and the many different students that they serve. Unique strengths and challenges and collaboration with others as well. And, um, just a couple of highlights outside of the presentation. So, during our work session last month, there were students from Decals North who came and, um, three students just talked to us about their experience and some of their, um, some of their, uh, experiences transitioning from their men- member districts into Decals and some of the differences and perceptions that, that communities, um, and people often have of, of students there. And I think that was just a really powerful and informative presentation. A couple of the other things to highlight. So, uh, Dr. Shaler, who, um, is one of the leaders at N- 917, she presented to new leaders at the Minnesota Administrators of Special Education, um, and so is working to develop new leaders there. And finally, just a couple other exciting things that we might have talked about, but, um, still working with all of the member districts, ours included, to open up opportunities through the Equity Leaders Network. That's facilitated by the Minnesota Humanities Center for staff members who are interested in participating in a collaborative network with other peers throughout the state. Story circles, uh, most of the staff through 917 have been completed through, uh, training sessions that were offered in partnership with the Minnesota Humanities Center in facilitating story circles. And they're really using those to amplify student voices and, um, partner, uh, more deeply with families as well. And finally, the last opportunity was still through the Teachers of Color and American Indian Teacher Program. And so, uh, that opportunity for, um, teachers of color and American Indians to participate in a unique opportunity, uh, another professional network there. So, those are some of the highlights from last month.
You know what, you, and I apologize. We had a meeting earlier. Uh, you mentioned you're going to a conference this week.
Oh, yeah.
For 917. I meant to ask you about it.
Yeah, so, um, the conference that I'm attending this week with a couple of other members is the, um, let me just pull up some of the details on it. So, it's the Association of Educational Service Agencies. And there were, um, quite a few different sessions that were offered. So, they have plenary sessions as well as breakouts. And so, one of the, um, things that we're doing as a team who's attending is we each, um, are taking a session since there were so many of interest. And we're going to bring it back and share not only with the rest of the group at 917, but with our member districts. Um, and the one that I'll be attending is around staff recruitment and retention. So, excited to see, you know, what, um, that brings. And we'll share any of the materials in our shared school board folder, um, with the rest of you.
Thank you. Our next item is, uh, or the last item in reports, communicate, in reports and communications is the Superintendent Evaluation Summary. Each year, the ISD 192 School Board conducts a comprehensive performance evaluation of the superintendent. Jason Berg was formally hired as superintendent in April of 2020. This is the second evaluation reflects comments on his performance from July 2021 through June 2022. The primary focus of the superintendent's evaluation is around implementation and development of the district's strategic framework. The framework provides the guideposts for learning design and operational decision-making and includes the following objectives. All learners possess the capacity and resiliency to create opportunities and master challenges. All learners continuously achieve their academic and personal goals. And each learner leads beneficial change locally and globally. It is appropriate to view the superintendent's evaluation in the context of the considerable external, uh, uncertainties and disruptions of the pandemic era, which required considerable agility to manage. Beyond district management issue, issues, state-directed policies have adversely affected children in learning and are impacting district operations in other ways, including enrollment decline that is affecting district, the district's financial health. These factors were considered in developing this performance evaluation. The process included a survey of ISD 192 educators, administrative staff, peers, and board members and the superintendent himself. The survey asked respondents to rank Jason Berg's performance around the following areas with respective scores on a zero to three-point scale where two is exceeds expectations. Areas are include results, scores 2.36, business knowledge, 2.25, collaboration, 2.39, communications, 2.49, quality, 2.35, technical and professional expertise, 2.45, and values-based leadership, 2.53. Overall, feedback is consistent. Jason has a reputation for being a transparent, for being a transparent, communicative, and engaged leader. He's open to the difficult and candid conversations and he readily accepts input and incorporates it where applicable. He is approachable, assumes positive intent, and demonstrates clear determination to succeed. Jason is an out-of-the-box thinker, which we need in education. And he also understands the importance of remembering that education's purpose is to develop literacy, mathematics, and critical thinking in learners. He prioritizes improvement in those academic areas as well as non-academic skills that prepare students with essential skills needed to succeed in the future economy. The comments overwhelmingly demonstrate trust in Jason's leadership. Consistent themes included his servant leader style, visibility in the district, passion for learning and education, contagious enthusiasm, and intentionality with respect for others. All of that said, a few areas for improvement and focus in the coming year include performance measures. The most critical area of constructive criticism, one that Jason himself cited, is around measuring and demonstrating success. The district is investing considerable resources in learning, does, redesign, and building an educational model for the future. As such, it's imperative that ISD 192 develop meaningful and accepted measurements for performance, of performance improvement aligned with the academic and life skill objectives of the strategic framework. Budgeting. There's broad agreement around the need to improve financial modeling and decision-making. To that end, the board is working with Superintendent Berg and his administration to bolster long-range forecasting and the processes that support district planning and which set accountable parameters for, for labor contract negotiations. And finally, work-life balance. High availability is, high availability is awesome, but it should come, it should not come at the expense of any individual's emotional well-being. Being always on can lead to responding to, looking at some situations or inquiries that would benefit from more time in, in consideration. This is a, a brief summary of the, the, uh, the, the evaluation pulled together, uh, for, for Jason's evaluation this, this year. I think that's it. Any comments or questions?
Yeah, just want to thank you Superintendent Berg for your continued leadership and, um, putting up with all of us.
And I love the fact that it was contagious enthusiasm because that definitely suits you, that description. So, thank you for that.
All right. Um, so with that, can I get a motion to accept, uh, acknowledged receipt of reports and communications?
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Onto our next item, administrative action. Approval of miscellaneous wage sheet substitute wage. Mary Ann?
Good evening, Chair Christensen, members of the board, Superintendent Berg, and members of the community. The school board at its last meeting discussed the need for a, uh, wage increase for our substitute employees. And the finance committee of the school board has discussed that issue a number of times. So, I won't repeat everything that was discussed at the last meeting, other than to say we are woefully behind our neighboring districts in terms of what we pay our substitutes. And that is, we believe, hurting us in terms of, um, staff who typically like to, uh, sub in Farmington, but when it's a $30 or $40 difference, they're going to go to our neighboring district. So, we're hoping with this change, we can pull back a few substitutes and maybe even encourage some family members who have four-year degrees to apply for a short-call sub. But anyway, we are going to be increasing, or we're recommending that we increase the substitute teacher wage for a daily substitute from 143 to $185 a day, which is competitive with our neighbors, as I mentioned. We are also recommend, and then the half-day rate would be a little tiny bit more than half at $93 a day. And we are also recommending that the paraprofessional substitute, paraprofessional and clerical substitute rate be increased from 13 to $15 an hour. That may help. We're having trouble filling our paraprofessional regular positions. So, maybe it would help a little bit to encourage people to come and sub for us as a clerical or paraprofessional sub. And then finally, although this wasn't discussed at the board meeting, it was my recommendation that if we have a daily substitute and they get a prep hour, typically they might be correcting papers or something like that for the teacher. But if we are short of teacher subs, then they could substitute during the prep hour. They used to make $15.80 an hour, barely what the paras are making. So, I do recommend that we increase that to $25 an hour to more encourage them to take that extra assignment if we need it, rather than paying a teacher at about two and a half times that rate. So, I think this is a, a good recommendation for our substitutes. It will be very helpful to our teachers who are getting really burned out, having to sub on their prep or being pulled from their regular assignments to sub. But I'd hap- be happy to answer any questions that you might have, um, about the recommendation.
Just, just one comment, I guess, for being on the finance committee was, I, I think one thing that took us, even though we're in a, a deficit, talking with Jane and Jason with, uh, additional funding coming from the revenue from the state is kind of where we looked at the revenue coming in from the state for this, to help offset that. That would cover even what we didn't discuss in the finance committee, which you brought up. So, from the, and I don't want to speak for Jaclyn, but I felt very good coming out of that
Yes.
with what we discussed on that. So, we do recommend everything on this moving forward from the finance committee. So, thank you.
Yeah, I actually just want to say that to, uh, Jaclyn and Steve and Mary Ann and Jason. I know that, you know, there's been some appetite to make some changes on this for, for some time now. And, and I want to thank you for asking diligent and, and good questions and taking all the extra time. I think, um, one thing that characterizes this year for me more than anything else is the extra amount of time, like the, 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 the committee assignment work, especially around finance and long-range planning, uh, that you guys have undertaken to really help us make good decisions. And I would say too, to this afternoon was like school board afternoon for, for most of us. And, and Hannah and I participated in the meet and confer with the union. And, and one of the subjects was actually this. And it was, I mean, I've, it's been hypothetical up until now, but to actually see and kind of hear the impact on, on some of our educators on what this has meant to, to not be able to fill positions and the opportunity that this represents to solve that important need. It's not just about pay rates. It's about not providing students with the services they need because we're missing staff. And that's fundamental to what this district is up, what it has to accomplish, right? So, anyway, thank you for the extra work and thank you for all the, the time you spent helping us to understand and make a good choice here.
I, I just want to clarify one thing because I think I misspoke at the work session. So, this would take effect December 1st and then would show up on the December 15th pay period, I think. I,
Well, it takes effect December 1st, but employees are paid two weeks behind. So, for all work after December 1st, it would, they get the increase, but they don't see it till actually December 30th.
But it, the pay goes into effect. I think I said it didn't happen until the 15th.
No, good point.
Yep.
Seeing no other questions, can I get a motion?
I will make a motion to approve, uh, change to the daily substitute teacher wage to $185, the half-day substitute teacher wage to be increased to $93. The rate for a substitute teacher subbing during the prep period be increased to 25. And the hourly substitute paraprofessionals and clerical wage be increased to $15 an hour. All effective December 1st, 2022, as presented.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Coletta. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I have to abstain from that one.
Thanks. Our next item on the agenda is policy action, uh, for a number of routine updates. Who leads us?
Board chair, board chair. Um, Kyle, uh, Mr. Christensen, did you abstain from the vote as well?
I don't believe my, I don't think I need to. Oh, is because it's all covered in there? All right, should I take a revote?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the reason, so, um,
Yeah.
Board member.
So, my wife is actually a para, so that's why I cannot, I have to abstain from voting on that?
And my wife is an administrative assistant. So, our, anyway, I didn't realize that was part of it. I was focused on the substitute teacher pay. So, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the policy, or to approve, approve the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion by Doyle, second by Simmons. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Show that, uh, Member Carrero and I abstained from the vote. The motion passes. Thank you. So, our next item is policy action. Jaclyn?
All right. Um, this is the third reading of these policies. Uh, we discussed them more in-depth at our work session. There was no major changes, any that we, um, did remove, we're still in discussion of. So, if there are no questions, I would encourage, um, the resolution to be passed.
Any questions? Seeing none, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt Policy 417, Chemical Use and Abuse, Policy 418, Drug-Free Workplace, Drug-Free School, Policy 1003, Acceptable Use of District Technology, Policy 1004, Consent for Publishing Student Work, and Policy 1006, Early Entrance into School as Presented.
Second. Motion by Simmons, second by Carrero. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
These policies pass. Our final item on the agenda is board remarks. The students already spoke, so they can speak. Uh, I'll start on this side, this, uh, to give you guys a breather, a little bit more of a breather. Rebecca?
Thank you, Kyle and Sue, for all of your hard work for the Patriotic Day. It was a wonderful event. And I just love seeing all those vets that are just so excited to be there and so grateful to have an opportunity to come in and participate in a community event. So, I do know that it is an awful lot of work. So, thank you for the time that you both have put into that and everybody else who, uh, put that on. And especially those wonderful men and women who work in our cafeterias that come from our different schools to help and cook all those, um, trays of food. Thank you to all of their hard work as well. And, um, just grateful to have everybody here from the schools hearing about, you know, different things going on, especially our early, um, childhood education. It's nice to hear what's available for our families. So, um, I'm just very grateful to have the opportunity to be up here. So, not too much longer, though, unfortunately. So, thank you to the new board members and our audience that are, are here tonight.
Sue?
Yeah. Um, I will ditto the same. Patriotic Day was wonderful. Lots of work and, and good by a lot of people, uh, that were on that committee. So, thank you for everybody that was involved in that. That's all I have.
Good luck to the students' final week. I did not realize it was finals week already. Wow, it's crazy. Good luck to all the students on that. And again, uh, Dr. Geis, I hope you replay this. So, the next board meeting, I expect you here. Um, on that, winter sports are kicking off. Good luck to them. I know we have some sports. Um, on that, winter sports are kicking off. Good luck to them. I know we have some sporting events tomorrow night. Also, I'd like to comment on our, our Facebook page for the school. I love reading the information on that. And it's nice to see, like, updates on the debate team, the dance team, robotics, besides all the sports and stuff and plays. Students of the week, athletes of the week. Um, I love reading that and I'll comment on it. And again, to the building updates, again, I really enjoy listening to all that. So thank you. That's all I have.
Michael?
Well, after three people talked before you, not really used to it. Kind of covered all my bases. So I just want to echo what everyone said. And that's, that's where I'll leave it.
Well done. Kennedy?
Yeah, um, similar, similar things to say. Um, that our lunch staff, they are amazing. They deal with those, those lunch rushes every day, but especially Patriotic Day. Um, they let me hide a lurky turkey in the lunchroom in there. So just everything that they do, thank you so much for that. Um, I want to also thank the community. Um, a lot of our events and things that we do would not be possible without you all being there and making Farmington such a great place by being involved, especially parents coming in. For students, especially like seeing maybe your friend's parent in the lunchroom is kind of fun and things like that. So it's really great to have such an involved community.
I will probably echo some of the same sentiments, but I don't care. I'm still going to say all of it. Good luck to all the kids on finals this week. I cannot believe that it's December. And, um, I mean, I'm excited I get to break out all my Christmas outfits, but, um, crazy that a third of the year is already over. It's unbelievable. Um, awesome job to the Blazing Cats on their state championship. That makes my heart so happy to hear that. Ms. Laubie, just shout out, I will be reached now because I want to go on a spring break trip. I'm sure there's not a lot of people volunteering to chaperone, so I will gladly volunteer as tribute for that.
As tribute.
It's awesome that we give those experiences to students or the opportunities. I, I still remember the Washington DC trip I took with Mr. Geis at the time, uh, in seventh grade, a long, long time ago. But, um, still remember it. It was just an awesome trip. So it's really, really cool to me that we give those opportunities to our students. Thank you to the respective, the school representatives that came in to talk about the buildings. Always, uh, awesome to hear what we're doing. Really, really cool to hear about all the fun runs and the PTPs because they are huge to our schools. I can only speak to like FES and what, because that's where my kids go. But the amount of money that the community and parents raise is just unbelievable. And so we appreciate you and we couldn't do it without all of you. The subpay, I'm really glad that passed. I just, that's very near and dear to me as I was a former sub. And as a teacher, like, subs are integral to our buildings. And I would say that oftentimes they have a harder job than the daily teachers because they're walking into a classroom blind, kind of. So thank you to the board for passing that. And thank you to the subs that we have in this district because you are very important. Um, and finally, I will not be here for our last meeting of the year. So I want to give a shout out to Steve and Rebecca and Sue for your eight, four and one-year service to this community and the school board. It is a huge commitment. I'm sure you'll be happy to have your Mondays back a little bit. And thank you to our new, newly elected, um, candidates or board members that will be, um, seated in January. Again, big commitments and, but I'm looking forward to working with everyone. So that is what I got.
Thank you, Hannah.
Okay, building on the comments that have already been shared, welcome to our new board members. Excited to work with you officially starting in January. Congratulations again. Um, I'm, I also want to extend a thanks to the administrators who are here tonight. I know it makes for a really long day when you've been at school since six or six-thirty in the morning. And then you're here, um, coming to give us updates and just really appreciate being able to see you and hear from you. I know your door is always open. I love the boardwalks and, and the fact that we can reach out to you anytime. But thanks for taking time out of your day to come in tonight. I also really have been excited to see when we talk about the energy and the return, you know, the changes this year and the return to more of a sense of normalcy. All of the field trip requests coming in the consent agenda, like just from the time that I started, those were non-existent. So to see those come through each month and really get a grasp, because my children are young, at the wide range of experiences that our district does offer to our learners, I, I think that's really, really neat. And building on this, the comments that have already been made around the substitute pay, just thanking our educators, our paras, our nurses, our administrators and all of the staff in our buildings. Because as we've heard more, um, and it's really helped deepen our understanding of what the day-to-day looks like. And it sounds like it's a very collaborative effort of just trying to serve our kids. And it's not easy on anyone. And so I, I thank you for my kids and for all of the kids in the district because, uh, it's a lot. And we really value your, your dedication and know that it's not easy. Congrats to all of the teams that were noted, as well as to those learners who will be celebrated on their academic achievement coming up. And one more thing that I would just want to thank, um, not only the presenters that were here tonight, but all of our administrative leadership team and the previous presenters who came from buildings is just, I have really seen a focus, um, as we go into this year on things like mental health of learners and connections to community and families and parents. And those were things that pandemic influenced, but also that I heard when I started a couple of years ago as main concerns. And it's, um, just something that I think, uh, I want to recognize you for because it's, it's very responsive to the things that I know are being brought to you daily, weekly, monthly, um, and things that people are hoping and, uh, hoping to see change or improvement and are worried about for their kids. So thanks for your responsiveness and continued efforts to always, you know, make, um, the days a little better for, for our kids.
I'll keep it, uh, relatively brief. Um, first, let me be the last to say congratulations, Kelly. I'm glad Steve got you when you, when you stepped up. But, um, I know there's a lot of people excited about your stepping up in the interim role, uh, for Dr. Geis. Those are big shoes to fill. Yeah, I mean, amazing. So, uh, congratulations. I, I know that folks are excited around, at the North Trail community for you to step in there. And on Dr. Geis, I second, uh, the motion for Dr. Geis to make a personal appearance here in December. So it's easy for me, right? So my kids went to North Trail. Um, I've known, uh, Dr. Geis. I've known Kelly for a few years now. And, and not that I have any favoritism of any one facility over any of the others, but Dodge Middle School is also a very, you know, where my other kids go. And the high school is now, you know, close to my heart now, too. But, um, but no, seriously. Dr. Geis has been in the district for twenty-nine years, twenty-nine of his thirty years. I mean, we have a board member who went on a seventh grade trip with, with him. I mean, that's, that's an incredible amount of service to this district. And, and, um, and, and anyway, so I'm looking forward to kind of helping him celebrate his retirement over the next couple of, uh, Literacy Night on Thursday night and, and whatnot. Thank you also for coming here to share the facility updates. I mean, we, I, I mentioned earlier that today was kind of a school board afternoon. The amount of time, like, it's not just meetings. It's not just these meetings. You know, we spend time in meet and confer sessions, committee meetings. Hannah and I, and, and, yeah, and today we also spent some time with the Equity Leadership Team, really trying to dig in and understand, uh, the district's approach to that and professional development on a much, on a much deeper level. Very good afternoon, great conversations. But, um, the strategic plan was something I know Hannah and Melissa Saucer, um, I mean, we, we spent, actually, I, I think I've taken six or seven days of PTO this year so that I could do school board work. You know, so it's, it's, it's a big thing that I, I feel connected to the strategic plan. And it's exciting to see it coming to life at the facility level, um, in, in kind of these other, these other ways. So just thanks again for continuing to bring that into the building. I'm looking forward to, you know, my next round of, uh, boardwalks and, and other things. Because it's, 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 you know, like Steve said, it's critical to get those relationships and actually see what's going on in the, uh, at the ground level each day. That's it. That's all I've got.
I just have one more comment that I missed. I apologize. I put my glasses back on. Dan, you brought this up, applications for student school board members. First of all, you guys have done a phenomenal job and I commend you for that because, again, you guys educate us of what's going on. But I think, if I remember correctly, we had about fifteen applicants last year. So I'm, I'm hoping to encourage more students to participate or others, you know, to come back, um, as well. But it, it's a fun role to play. Um, and you guys really reflect of what we're looking for and at from students. So thank you.
All right. Well, that concludes the board remarks. Um, our next item is actually, we're going to go into closed session for labor negotiation strategy. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to move to closed session at six thirty-nine pursuant to Minnesota Statute 13D-03 to discuss labor negotiation strategies.
Motion by Doyle, second by Carrero. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.